Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Jim Webb, and I'm here with the Lycoming County Commissioners. We got Chairman Scott Metzger. Good to see you, Scott.
Good to see you, Jim.
Longtime Commissioner Tony Masser. Good to see you.
Hi, Jim.
Commissioner Masser, how are you?
Nice seeing you. I'm doing well.
And we got Commissioner Rick Marabito next to me here, and we have him via phone. How are you doing, Commissioner Marabito?
Very well, thank you. And I assume you're keeping your safe distance from my photograph there?
I'm trying to. You look darn good in that photograph.
Well, thank you very much, and it's a pleasure to have you with us today, Jim.
Hey, the big reason I wanted to come, I mean, everybody's got questions. Everybody wants to know what's going on, but I think, I think we get past talking about what's occurred to this point and talk about reopening, getting the county back to work, getting the county back to as normal as we can, because I've talked to you guys off camera. It's gonna be, take a little while to get us back to normality, and I'll let you address that one, chairperson, chairman.
Absolutely. We want to do it in a safe, measured way, at the same time make sure that the people have the social or the safety guidelines that, like I said last Tuesday at our work session, our business leaders, our business folks are the most innovative, creative people in the world. And through this pandemic, they have stayed open if they're allowed to.
Sure.
And they've done creative ways to do so. And they'll think of those new ideas going forward. They don't need government telling them what to do. They just need the guidelines, and then let government get out of the way and let them operate the businesses like they used to.
Can I give you an amen, brother?
Sounds good to me.
That sounds like a great plan, and I like to call it safe space.
Exactly.
So we need to find that safe space and get things moving back. Commissioner Marabito, you want to add anything to that?
No, I mean, I think that we're gonna have challenges for our families and our community in the sense that, you know, even if we slowly get people back to work, we're still gonna have people who are not in school, kids who are not in school. So that's gonna be a challenge for our families in terms of, they may no longer be at home, and now they're gonna have young ones who aren't in school. So I think we have to be cognizant of that, and employers are gonna have to obviously try to work with families on that, because usually these kids would be in school till June 5th. The other factor is that, I mean, everything that we read tells us that we're probably not just gonna be able to have this go away even by summer, because, think about this for a minute. Some of the areas that we may be able to open, but some of the areas that are very highly infected, such as, you know, Southeast PA, the New York metro region, as people start traveling across our state, you know, we have to be concerned about the fact that the virus may travel. So I think what Mr. Metzger said is very true. People are probably still gonna be wearing masks as they go about their business to try to prevent the spread. But the hard part is the asymptomatic people, the people who don't know they're carrying the virus and who are able to spread it. I'm confident that we can open up our businesses here, and we certainly have had a lower incidence, but we want to be careful. In fact, I think, maybe one of my colleagues can help me, I think that we, did they trace some of the cases that came here to Lycoming County from outside the area?
Yes.
Do any of you remember?
There was, there was two waves. There was, the first wave was, they traced the people that had visited metropolitan areas either for work or for enjoyment, and then it was their relatives that contracted it after that, so.
We've been very blessed here. There's just no doubt about it in the way that everybody's responded and practiced what's been asked of them, but also there's a little luck involved. We've had a lot of people through the area. You've seen the license plates, but we've been very fortunate that they haven't brought more, and that's a good point, Commissioner Marabito. And we'll get that over to you, Commissioner Masser, because he gave us a great segue there. And you and I were talking before we came in. What would you like to see open up? I mean, we're all in agreement, it's that we need to move forward, we need to be smart about how we do it, but what do you think? And I know I'm putting you on the spot, but what's a couple of things you think we can get going here?
Well, immediately, if not sooner, our golf course. It's a great way to get out and have exercise. Billy Casper Golf, we tasked them to find a safe way of opening the golf course, and we felt that they did. Come up with a very good plan, and the governor turned it down, but that needs to be open.
Absolutely.
People need to get out, and we're gonna need to take a stance here sooner or later, because we've collected membership fees last year and this year, and no one, and I want to thank, I want to thank every one of the golfers out there that bought memberships at Lycoming or at White Deer. No one's ever complained yet. They understand the situation that the golf course is in. We've used their money to pay expenses, and you golf with friends. You don't golf with strangers, and friends aren't going to hurt friends. And we can make this happen, we can make it safe, and we can get this thing open, and I'd like to see it open by this weekend, if not the following weekend at the latest. There's no reason why we can't.
And I know it's something trivial, trivial of a golf course and getting it open, and people that don't golf might not appreciate, but it's just that step for all those folks to get some normalcy back, and from a county standpoint, opening up business.
Open up.
And I don't golf for everybody out there. I'm not a golfer, so I didn't come in here and ask you to open the golf course, did I?
No. But, but you understand, I'm not sure, you know, you look at people talking about a fourth stimulus, third stimulus, fourth stimulus. You have to understand, these are trillions of dollars.
Oh.
Okay? This is something that we have to pay back, and, boy, I hope so.
Yeah, me too.
I don't want to see any more stimulus money.
I don't either.
We need our businesses open, we need people to get back to work, we're all going to be safe, and guess what? We're gonna still have COVID. People are still going to contact us.
And that's one thing, that's a great point. I would like to see that, that number that keeps, and I talked to Coroner Kiesling last week, but that number that just keeps growing, that how many cases are in the county?
Yes.
That needs to be changed to how many active cases?
Active.
How many are cured? I mean, no other disease is done that way during a pandemic. Usually you have an accurate number of what's going on, and I'll let you have that one, chairman.
Well, they're basing the numbers, they're basing the reopening on these numbers.
Right.
And the numbers aren't accurate. I mean, we had two deaths in Lycoming County, and they were inaccurate. I said to the coroner, where are these deaths at? I don't know. So he reaches out to Department of Health, and they sent him a 10-page application with seven pages of instructions, and then each person he's asking about says $9 fee. Now, this is the head of the Pennsylvania Coroner's Association. The red tape he has to go through. Well, the next day, they revamp and say, we don't have two deaths in Lycoming County. Matter of fact, we don't even have the 282 more deaths that we reported yesterday in the state of Pennsylvania. So as they reopen based on these numbers, they have to be accurate.
Absolutely.
And what I like to see is the small businesses get open. Seventy percent of our businesses in Pennsylvania are small businesses. Right now, we're number two in the country in unemployment compensation claims, and that's a grave concern. And I have, one of my friends is a small contractor. He can't feed his six-month, nor his three-year-old, has two workers. Any given day, they're 10 feet apart, and yet that afternoon, he can take them all fishing. They can get in a vehicle, they can go fishing together.
Yes.
But they can't work together. There's no logic there.
There's no logic.
Yeah.
Commissioner Marabito, you want to add to that about, I know you're a big advocate for small business. Do you want to jump in on that?
Yeah, I mean, I understand my colleague's concerns about, about the additional stimulus. One of the problems that I've found is that the, and if you look at the data that came out, the big banks were able to channel a lot of money to big customers, and that first 350 billion that came out for the, was supposed to be for small business. So you have your small businesses like we have in Lycoming County, which both of my colleagues are intimately familiar with, maybe they're 10 employees, 15 employees, it's a mom and pop, and they're, they have enough work for themselves, for the family, and for maybe, you know, 10 or 15 other people.
And that's what I have, incidentally. I have nine employees, so you're in the right pew.
Yeah, and that's exactly the demographic in, in, in Lycoming County for probably, I would estimate, maybe, I think there are about 5,000 businesses in the county. I would estimate that probably about 75% in that category. But around the country, and obviously that money went to many other entities around the country, you know, their, their companies, remember, that was under 500 employees.
Yes.
So there were companies with 400 employees with, you know, probably 100 million in revenue, and they, they got locked. Now, there's another, there's another stimulus that just opened today, right, the second round, and I'm hoping that we can get some of our small folks who maybe didn't get it the first time, didn't understand it. One of the key constituents out there who are listening is that you need to get connected to a bank that is approved and certified by the Small Business Administration for doing loans. I think that you're gonna have a higher success rate by working directly with a banker, as opposed to try to submit it on your own through the portal, although I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put any betting numbers on it, but let's put it this way, most of the folks I've spoken to who have been successful have worked through a small bank, or, you know, have worked through their bank. So on the issue of the, of the opening, so one of the problems, I think, is that we're trying to prevent a resurgence of the virus, and it's a mathematical formula in the sense that there's an exponential spread of the virus. And what do I mean by that? One person infects, I did four and a half people, five people, I can't remember the exact number.
Two.
But, oh, two people, but I guess the significance of what I'm saying is you take that, that 42 cases that we have, and someone mentioned earlier about making sure that there's still active cases, but you take those 42, and if each one of them infects two, and then of those two, each one, that's how you begin to get the surge that happens. One of the things I'm concerned about is that if you look at what's happened, the virus went from China to South Korea. When it first came to the United States, there weren't that many cases, and then we saw how the math in it blew up the number of cases. And I'm concerned that rural communities are gonna have a similar experience. For a long time, we haven't had many cases. Now, you know, we don't have a lot of cases, but what do we have, 42?
I think it was up to 50 this morning when I looked.
Yeah, 50. When you throw 50 into a math formula that I just described, one to three or one, things begin to get more complicated. That doesn't mean we can't gradually open up, but I think it does mean that we have to be vigilant about also trying to do contact tracing. And, and I know that some of the hospitals have done that with the people in their immediate care. I guess one of the things we could discuss as commissioners is, who's doing the contact tracing on people who are not necessarily being treated but just tested positive in their quarantine? I don't think that's really happening. That's what the big conversation is nationally. You know, this morning, I was listening to, to former, under the Bush administration and the Obama administration, and they, they were talking about hiring 180,000 people to do contact tracing. Obviously, the majority of it would be in the big cities, but here, even in our community, if someone is being treated, they're doing the contact tracing from what we understand the UPMC, but if someone is self-quarantining but tested positive, I don't know that anyone is doing that. And that's not just a problem here, it's a problem nationally. But those national problems create problems for us when those people travel through our area. And obviously, we want, you know, business doesn't just happen within the county, right? I mean, business to really work means that people have to go outside the county. They've got to go to other places to do things. So I think it's complicated.
It is, but I think that comes down to, we don't have 50 cases of people currently sick. I think you have to get that accurate number. And I agree with you also back to the first person that had it. What is their health? How are the people around them with that contract, contact tracing? It would be interesting to know from a medical standpoint, did anybody get sick that they came in contact? What's the ratio, you know, to get, to get a true, true number? Back to getting them reopened, chairman. We got small business, but let's stick with the health industry and the medical profession and all the, the dentist, right down the list. I mean, right, right now, let's be honest, we're, the medical, anything tied to medical or people being laid off across the county.
Yeah.
I mean, there's not enough work out at the hospitals currently, and we want to keep it that way.
Absolutely. All the appointments for procedures that need to be done before or have been put off for two, three months, those, those healthcare workers aren't, aren't working, and it's a real issue.
Now, we need to get them back to work. Is there a set date? Do we have a solid date, Commissioner Masser?
Well, let, let me add to his comment.
Okay.
We've had some conversations with healthcare professionals, and the true reality is this. We have maybe one death in Lycoming County, maybe none? I'm not, I'm not sure. They took the two deaths away, correct? And when we had that conversation with some of the healthcare providers and even with our coroner, we had three people who committed suicide, left notes and saying why, because they were in too much pain to wait for the surgery, okay? These are three deaths. We have zero in the virus, one. And to think of all the heart attacks and other things that have happened that have taken people's lives because they were fearful to go to the hospital to contact this Corona, and yet they died of heart attacks. So we don't even have those true numbers, and that's why I think it's very important. You know, I get it. You have the fear. Now you have to have the education and the awareness, and we have that. We have that now. Everybody knows that. You don't go anywhere without, we have our masks, we're just talking, so.
Yeah, and we're six feet apart. We're, my term, safe space, social distancing, whatever.
Yes.
We're awful careful, other than I am a little.
Close to.
Too close. But he made a great point, and I'll kick it over to you. I do know from talking with Coroner Kiesling that that is the hard numbers, that we've had three suicide deaths, we've had other overdoses that could be contributed, not for, but, but I think of the procedures that aren't getting done, and I have a son that needs dental work done, and that's been put on hold, but, but there's a lot of those, maybe they catch the cancer earlier. The true number isn't gonna be known until long after this.
Yeah, the fallout from this is tremendous. Addiction doesn't take vacations, it's gonna get worse. Domestic violence doesn't take vacations, it's gonna get worse. Hunger, you know, the hunger that's growing in this area alone is a grave concern. You know, there's more people are out of work, they can't feed their kids, they can't feed themselves, and that, that's a huge concern, so.
Well, the pressure created.
Yeah. New York City alone, two weeks ago, they had five times as many heart attacks as they did last year during those two weeks period, that two-week period. So you can see the enormous pressure and anxiety people are under that's causing stress, and we know stress by far is the number one killer.
No, yes.
And so as this continues to mount, you know, what I would like to see instead of a stay-home order, I would like to see a safer-at-home order, where we protect our vulnerable population, you know, the nursing homes, the hospitals.
Sure.
Make sure that those people are protected, people who have health issues. Those are the ones we have to be watching out to make sure that they're not the ones that are the main targets of infection.
And we're not gonna see those folks. If Aunt Mildred, my great Aunt Mildred's watching, hello, great Aunt Mildred, she's 102 out of Valley View, like you and I talked about off-camera, she might still be driving if she could, but it's tough on those folks, but I don't expect to be able to see her in person for a while, and we gotta make sure we're following the social distancing for our older folks in nursing homes and certain, that might not end for a while.
Yeah.
Rick, do you want to address that one?
Well, one thing I would like to say is, I think that, that, you know, there's some good points raised. If people have medical issues, I think they should absolutely talk to their doctors, because I think to unilaterally make a decision that I'm not gonna go to the hospital because I'm too afraid of what might happen without talking to your doctor leaves that of the equation, you know, an important part of it. So, you know, if you, if you were supposed to have some surgery, whatever, you should talk to your doctor, you should talk to them and find out, is it safe for me to come in? And, and make that decision with a healthcare professional as opposed to just making it on your own. But, yeah, I mean, I think that what you said is absolutely true. The social distancing is not necessarily for us, it's for the other folks who, it's also for us, because obviously anyone over a certain age is more vulnerable, but it's, it's for me giving it to, you know, I may not show symptoms, but I give it to somebody who happens to work as a healthcare or first responder, and they get it and don't realize they have it, and then they, you know, are transmitting it to someone. So, you know, I agree with you, we have to practice that, that social distancing.
And I want to jump in there. I think the big thing, and back to the numbers and why everyone's concerned, I was gonna say sit here, but Rick's sitting in another, false evidence against reality. A lot of folks fear. To me, fear is, you break it down, it's false evidence against reality. That's why the numbers are so important. That's why getting Coroner Kiesling's message out there. But a lot of our folks watch the national news, and I'm not, you know, I'll throw them all in, I'm not singling anybody out, this is a non-bias political statement, and they're scared. So they're scared by that fault that they assume that it's that bad here, and we're blessed. It's not, but I think that false, it's important for you folks, the coroner. You guys are doing a great job trying to get the message out there that, listen, we're gonna be as safe as we can, but we gotta get things moving a little forward, and I'll come back to you, Mr. Businessman, we're gonna call you. And Rick, you're listening in, and you've been around business your whole life, but I think we need to do the soft opening. I mean, if you and, if us three were, us four were starting a restaurant, I mean, we don't want to go gangbusters. We'll chase more people away if we can't take care of them, and I think that's, the golf course, I mean, that's, that'd be a good test, some small bit, let's get that soft opening rolling, get some numbers back, and I'll let you go on that.
Well, we brought our employees back to do some projects around our warehouse and our showroom. We took advantage of the PPP, okay?
Sure.
And I'm not paying people to stay at home.
I agree.
Not going to do that. And if they think they're gonna stay at home for no good reason other than they're afraid, you're not gonna be working for Rainbow Carpet.
Can I jump in on that, or should I?
No, you can.
Or for the fact they might be making more money to stay at home?
Oh, they, and they have, okay? But the point I'm getting at is that we're in a service business, so we go to people's homes, and, and, you know, we're in an average of five homes a day.
Sure.
Okay? I don't want to go into a home where elderly are at right now.
Sure.
Period. Okay, so then if you need a service, you need to either back out the elderly, or I'm gonna practice my safety, okay, for sure, and, or let it be vacant, okay? There are, we do a lot of work in vacant homes or businesses, okay? Let us, let us start with that.
It's the best time to do it.
Right.
So, Rick, you want to jump in on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that if we, you know, if we listen to the folks who, if you look at what the governor is proposing, he's proposing, and actually, CCAP supported the idea of a regional approach to opening as opposed to, you know, by county, and Commissioner Masser can talk more to that since he's on the executive board at CCAP, but, and I know there were differences of opinion, but the, the approach has been to open on a regional basis. And from what I can tell from what the governor's saying is, they're, you know, they're opening construction, they're proposing, I think, May 1st to open construction. Did they move, they moved that up from May 8?
Yeah, but there's still a lot of restrictions.
Right. But, but the point is that today is the 27th, so you're, you're talking about, you know, by the end of this week, construction will be open, and, and then shortly after that, they're talking about opening up, you know, places that are not strictly life-sustaining. So I think that that is happening, and that we just have to, you know, retail locations are gonna be able to open very soon, they're gonna have to follow certain guidelines. So I guess what I'm saying, suggesting is that this is gonna happen, it's happening, and plans are being made, you know, so it's, it's good in that sense.
Sure.
They're still gonna prohibit gatherings of more than 25 people and so forth.
And I'll kick that back to you, Mr. Chairman. You folks, as the commissioner group, have authority to dictate some of what happens within Lycoming County in reopening, right?
Well, a lot of it's been handed down by the governor, which ties our hands. I would like it to be handed back to the counties personally, because I would go back to the business owners. I mean, for a restaurant owner, he can figure out his seating, he can, he can move an extra table or two out of the seating area, space the tables apart, he doesn't have to bring the silverware out on the table right away, it can be brought out when the person arrives. There's different ways that they know how to run their businesses.
Sure.
Just give them the guidelines and let them reopen.
And it's the same way you commissioners know how to reopen the county as opposed to, you know the county, and we know Commissioner Marabito will keep balance. I mean, there's no question, I don't think it's a safety issue. How much leniency is there for you folks to open a golf course? I'll kick that back to you, because.
Well, there is no leniency.
So you can't reopen it?
Well, we could if we wanted to find, but then you worry about, not that we'd have the bar open or the restaurant open, we just want people to get out and exercise.
Sure.
Okay? But would they look at us, and, you know, would there be repercussions if we went against what, what he ordered? Maybe, hopefully not, though. I mean, this is, this is just exercise, and with no more than four people, you know?
Sure.
No more than four, and they can social distance easily.
And Commissioner Marabito, I mean, that's essential, non-essential, but you could make an argument that getting out to a golf course could relieve a lot of stress. I hate when they divide up essential, non-essential, life-sustaining, non-life, however they want to divide it up, it's all in the eye of the beholder.
I mean, could add stress, missing that three-foot putt.
Yeah, it might add stress.
Well, you know, so I think part of what Commissioner Masser is saying also, or at least, this is my, what I feel, is that we don't want mixed messages going out to the public, because one of the hardest things is that when, when the scientists are saying one thing and when elected officials are saying something else, people don't really know which they, they should do. And one of the things I read early on, I mean, way, way back in February, was that they hoped that politicians would try to let the scientists run this. Now, don't get me wrong, I don't think we should just put our blind faith all the time and not question, but I think the difficulty for us is that, or for me at least, is I don't want to be giving mixed messages, which is why, and I don't think that my colleagues want to do that either. I think that that's why we, we haven't opened the golf course to date. I think part of the hard thing for us to realize is that, you know, we're dealing with this one county and with the problems we face with our employees and so forth, and the governor and, and, and the governors of all the states, Republican, Democrat, the president, they're dealing with a nation, or they're dealing with a state which has, so, so many, many problems are cropping up all the time. If you think about how sometimes, even in this pandemic, we wish we had acted on something sooner, or, well, I imagine that for them, that's happening. So they put out an order that said, that, you know, some people objected to it being very, seeming to not have discretion, but it's hard in a short amount of time to try to get people on the same plane about something, and so I think that's part of it. So, you know, maybe they shouldn't have had golf courses on the list, maybe, but at the same time, they were trying to get people to understand that you can't just go about life as normal, and it's very hard to get, you know, that message to people, especially mass numbers of people when you're trying to talk to 12 million people in the state.
My biggest issue that, that faces Pennsylvania right now is the loss of revenue. That's one. And now it becomes a competitive issue. All the surrounding states are, and I'm just using golf as an, as an example, okay? I'm not, you know, I'd go back to golf, but just as an example, they are golf. I don't know if any of them ever shut down. If I can add one thing, Jim, I've been in business for 33 years, and we were ordered to shut down. I get maybe five to 10 customers a day, now not by the phone, but in person, coming in to pick up things, and we complied, and then a competitor, which is a big box store, stays open with thousands of customers. You see, the consistency that was brought out by whoever, I'm gonna say the governor in this particular case, was, was not correct. It was not fair.
Absolutely not.
And, and that had a lot of us, and Commissioner Marabito talks about consistency, okay? So we can't. we can't be sending different messages out. Well, that's exactly what he did in a number of, of different organizations and businesses.
And when I talk to people, it needs to be across the board. If it's non-essential products, they shouldn't be sold at Walmart or Target. And I'm fans of everywhere. But if you have products that you can't sell, why should you be able to go to a competitor? And that includes online sales. If, if you can't buy essential products from local business owners that support the community, that pay taxes, you shouldn't be able to order them online. They should be deemed non-essential and not, and I don't want to hear they didn't know that at the time, because I know for a fact it was brought up in Harrisburg and discussed that. Anyway, we'll kick that back to you with your thoughts.
Yeah. No, Jim, that, no, Commissioner Maser raised a good point. I mean, the, the numbers of people who were, who were congregating at the big box stores just totally was contrary to what the goal was of not having people. And, and to allow them to sell certain products that were not of an emergency nature, like, you know, that Commissioner Maser sells, was wrong. And I, and I've been trying to figure out how that happened and whether it was numbers or what. But it certainly was, we saw that during the pandemic. We saw lots of people congregating there. So that's wrong. The online store, sale of automobiles, you know, that probably should have been allowed from day one. And then people, you know, there's no sense in, you know, if one person is going to pick up a car or something, why they couldn't be six or 12 feet away if they're going in to meet a, a dealer, automobile dealer, and, and they're going to sign paperwork? Or you email the paperwork to them at home and let them review the loan documents and then let them go in and sign it? You know? And I'm not, you know, I'm not going to throw people under the bus afterwards. Because I just think that, like I said, people were dealing with a lot of things. But now, hopefully we'll learn this and, and move on with it, and move on with letting some of these folks open, which I think is going to happen on May, well, certainly, like, for example, I believe Pentology is planning to come, to have students come back May 11 to finish their labs.
Wow.
I mean, I think that, that's the latest email that I saw, the latest email I saw said that they were going to be coming back May 11. So that's obviously, you know, a business, it's an educational business, but it's still an important part of our community.
Oh, no, that's, that's positive. I mean, that's a great point. Thank you for bringing that up.
And Commissioner, you're, you know, when you bring on online purchasing, one of my biggest fears is certainly not the, the virus. My biggest fear is as you see Amazon put on another 150,000 people.
Yes.
And people start to move from retail establishments to online purchasing. We are going to see a tremendous drop in values of those stores, okay, in, in the assessed values of the property, which means the pressure is going to fall back to our residents.
Yes.
And, and this is coming to a head.
In tax base.
The tax base. That's right. I am more concerned about that than anything.
Yeah. Commissioner Maser, we may, ironically, I think that when, when we get back to a more normal existence, we may find people saying, you know what, I'm going out to my local store. You know, you take something away from people, the ability to shop. Because I agree with you, that the online shopping is a huge threat to the tax base of the brick and mortars, and ultimately to the people who don't even own a brick and mortar store but who pay property taxes. Because you, you know, and that's what you're referring to, when those commercial taxes go away, when we see all these businesses going away, the burden falls. But we may see, because of, of, you know, problems and so forth, that people's also interested in just seeing other people. Maybe, we don't know, right? Maybe we'll see an obstacle in some retail brick and mortar usage.
I hope.
I'd like to bring up a couple of points. Back to the automotive business. Transportation is, is essential. You have to have transportation. And whether it be public transportation or your own transportation, the public transportation, the routes are cut. You can't take the buses at your normal hours. For someone to buy a vehicle online, it's difficult.
Very.
You're spending as much as you do for a half of a home. And you want to make sure that you are able to see that vehicle, feel that vehicle, and feel comfortable in that vehicle. And to buy a vehicle online is very difficult. To be one of three states, us, Idaho, and Hawaii, where you can't buy a vehicle in person is insane.
When all the states around us are currently, even New York State that has the biggest problem are currently selling vehicles.
Yep. Another thing is real estate. Same thing. A realtor can show a home in Maryland, New Jersey, and New York, but you can't show a home in Pennsylvania. And it just, there's no logic there again.
Well, and again, Mr. Maribito made the point that people are reacting to things in a quick manner when this happened. And they're always going to make mistakes. Hindsight's 2020. But the frustrating thing to me is the non-ability to adjust as we get deeper and deeper into this, to, to take a look at what's going on and make those adjustments. And, and again, I trust you guys, I trust the people of Lycoming County. I think every time you go up the chain of government, you lose contact with the area and what the best is. And I would sooner have the people of Lycoming County making this shit. I'm not going to go buy a car right now. They can sell them. I'm not buying one. I'm not going to come, I'm not going to get my carpet cleaned. They can clean it, but I don't want it cleaned. I mean, I think when you start, where does that end? And I don't want this to turn into a political message, and this isn't about being Republican or being Democrat, it's about being American. But that's a slippery slope when you take the decision-making power out of local government, out of we, the people, and now you're being dictated down because the bottom line is the larger the government, you get to state than the fed, the wheels move slow.
You know?
I mean, and it takes a while to address. Go ahead.
Jim, I, I want to make this comment. Our federal legislators, Senator Casey Toomey, our Congressman Fred Keller, Senator Gene Yaw from the state, and Jeff Whelan and Garth Everett, has done a tremendous job in communicating the messages to us county commissioners, okay? There's no lack of communication. There's no lack of the needs of our people that, that they're addressing. It, it, it is one of the, I want to say few times, I don't want to say few times, but it's one of the times that I'm very proud that we live in a democracy and that, that, you know, the opposing parties came together and said, okay, let's get this right, or at least try. And I, and I really believe that. Now it's starting to turn into a little bit of politics. But, but we've been, we've had great communication.
You want to jump back in there, Mr. Chairman?
Well, speaking of government, I like to switch gears a little bit here. I want to talk about the primary coming up on June 2. And there's a lot of concern about mail-in ballots, you know, going strictly that way. I can assure you that, like Coming County, we'll have polls open. We've talked about it as commissioners. It's a very important democratic process, a true democracy, to make sure that a person can show up at a poll and vote for who they choose. We will have, obviously, mail-in ballots for those who choose to mail their votes in. It's very similar to the absentee ballot. It's almost identical. So Forrest Lehman, who's in charge of our voter registration, has been instrumental in getting the mail-in ballots in place, making sure that they'll be secure for those who choose to go that route. Also, at the same time, a lot of our poll workers are elderly, and they're concerned about their health and working at the polls. So we're taking the necessary measures to make sure that we have replacements for those poll workers that aren't able to work that day or choose not to work that day. But we'll make sure the polls are there and that they're open for those who choose to vote in person.
Good, good.
Outstanding. And if I could make, go ahead.
Well, no, I was just going to add that the public should understand that if they choose to vote with a mail-in, it's absolutely secure. Because you have to apply to get it, and then you're going to get a ballot that goes into an envelope that has nothing on it, and that goes into an envelope that is addressed to voter services. And when that ballot comes back, no one is going to be able to see it because the ballot's inside an envelope that's not opened until all the envelopes are taken out of the outer ballot, outer envelope. And you're not going to be able to vote twice because the outer envelope is going to be scanned to record that, you know, Rick Maribito applied for mail-in ballot, got it, mailed it back. He can't get another one. He can't go and vote in person because it shows up in the voter book when he goes that he's already voted by mail-in. So it's very safe and it's very secure. And I think that's what Commissioner Mesker was pointing out, but I just want the public to understand the process, because some of them haven't done it before.
Sure.
No one knows how you vote. No one knows how you vote.
No. And, and back to keeping things on a local level and, and keeping government in a local level, Mr. Forrest Lehman, that works for elections. I put all the faith and trust in him that our votes will be accurate in Lycoming County. And I know you do, Mr. Maribito.
Oh, absolutely.
And I think it's important.
Excellent. Simple program.
Outstanding. But again, I think it's important that we, the people, aren't forced to have to vote by mail. That if you want to vote by mail, the option's there, and you can, you can vote by mail. If you want to go to the voting pool, if you feel more... The important thing is to get as many people voting. And, and again, safe space, social distancing, make sure everybody's safe. Commissioner, what do you think about that, Maser?
You know, I'd be the first one to, to criticize the mail-in vote. And so I went to Forrest. And it is funny. Democrats and Republicans are just as concerned both ways.
Oh, sure.
We've had so many calls from both parties that this isn't right, it's a suppression of the vote, and they're, you know, the other party's going to have advantage. And it is funny, it's comical right now to, to hear both sides. But I understand their concern because I was one of them. But after going over the procedure with Forrest and how, you know, it's put on the books at the polling places, so there's no way one person's going to be able to, to, to have two votes or whatnot.
Sure.
They're, they're all registered to vote. Here's my only issue with, with the mail-in ballots, is that they can go into a, a home, and, and the, the sons and daughters can take them to the nursing homes or wherever, and, and they could fill it out. That's probably the only abuse that could happen there. And that's, and that's a concern, but I'm sure that's happened, you know, prior. I, I don't think it's a major concern.
I know a story firsthand that I'll share briefly. Somebody passed away, the ballots have already been sent, and I know the woman's going to return the votes for both her husband and wife the way she wants them.
Right.
Now, part of me says that guy voted his whole life, and if that's the way he was going to vote it, God bless him if he can vote from the other side. Do you know what I'm saying?
It's wrong, but...
But it, it's sort of not how it's supposed to be. Mr. Maribito, throw something in because you're, you're the lawyer of the bunch here.
Well, I, you know, I don't know what, I mean, I think that my colleagues are correct. It's obviously very important. I think you're going to find a lot of seniors who, depending on what's happening on by June 2, who may end up voting with the absentee, just because they're very concerned. You know, the, the tricky part is the older you get, the more compromised health conditions you have. And
Sure.
If your immune system, if your immune system is not, you know, right on target, this virus becomes much more deadly. And so we, so many, you know, that's one of my concerns about, you know, opening too quickly, too fast, and so forth, is that in rural communities, we have more older people than statistically than the rest of the country. In rural communities, the health of our population is not as great. We have higher percentages of people with diabetes, with chronic diseases, COPD. There's actually a mortality factor that, meaning how many people die per thousand that works against you in a rural community. In a rural community, we have a higher mortality rate. So it, thank goodness that we haven't been hit with this virus the way the urban areas have. And then, of course, our healthcare system is much smaller. In this county, we have about 30 ICU beds, I think, at, at UPMC, 26 or 30 ICU beds. The number of, you can go online to the PA Department of Health, and they, they give you by county how many ICU beds, how many pediatric ICU beds. I don't think we have any pediatric ICU beds in the county. So, so I think you may find some seniors who say, you know what, given my health and the risk factor, I'm going to vote by mail-in. But, you know, as you said, the choice is up to the individual. If they want to go down, they go at a time. Sometimes when you go to those polls, nobody's there.
Sure.
Right?
Yeah, and I think that's a great, great point. I mean, being smart when you vote.
Exactly. The time you vote, you know?
Yeah.
Getting there earlier. So I think we're going to be able to carry this election off.
Well, I have no doubt. I, like I said, I have faith in, in, there's nowhere I'd have more faith in than right here at home. That's just the way I am. And, and again, I know Forrest, we know Forrest. I know you guys. And I, and that's the message I want to get out. Folks, you got to be worried, you got to want to protect yourself and the people around you. But please, don't fall victim of fear. There's good people working on your behalf locally here that care. And, and that boils it right down. And we could probably go on all day because we have so many. We didn't talk about the airport. Who was my lady Olive?
Jim, one, I think this is one thing that's very important. People should not use the coronavirus as a reason not to vote this year.
Absolutely.
The coronavirus is not a reason not to vote. Because between going when it's not crowded or mail-in, you can vote.
Absolutely. And again, let's put it out here. I'll let you tell. How, how do you go about voting by mail, and when do you have to be, be, have that taken care of?
Ooh, I'm not sure of the exact date. I don't have it handy with me.
Okay, put you on the spot.
It's in the middle of May. I know that. You have to have your application in to do so.
So the important thing, there's plenty of time to still do that.
Yeah, it's about two weeks. It's about two weeks before the June 2 deadline. And you just contact the voter registration. You can contact them online or in person, or not in person, but on phone. They're in the office. They can answer any questions you have. Forrest Lehman is a man of integrity. He runs that department with integrity. I want to thank our, our seniors that work the polls and the other poll workers because it's a long day. They're not compensated that much. And it's a very, very long day for a lot of them, and, and they're very dedicated to what they do. And we understand their fears. But by June 2, I think we'll have a, a different outlook on this virus. I think the longer this goes on, day-wise, we'll see less and less. Again, I'm a proponent for, instead of stay at home, let's try to save at home and protect our
And that's a great way to put it.
Our vulnerable populations, the most important, that we have to really make sure at this time. Because if you look at the stats, the majority of the, the people that are the deaths are the people that are 65 or older or have had some kind of a health issue. Either a combination of the one or the both, or they have the one. So the stats, you look at the numbers, unfortunately, that's who the, the virus is more Aggressive with.
And, and not to make light of this, but it's that way with every illness.
True.
You have to protect the young, you have to protect the old, it seems.
Absolutely.
And unfortunately, we become the old, you know? And we definitely, and like Mr. Maribito said, we got to look out for older folks.
Absolutely.
But not
By the way, Jim, Jim, one last point on the voting. We need, there are some poll workers who are, who are not, are not going to be able to do it. So if you are young or, you know, I shouldn't say if you're young, but if you feel that you can be a poll worker, we could use you volunteering now. Because there's some poll workers who cannot do it because of their age or because their, their risk. And so you should call Forrest Lehman if you're out there, and he'll, he'll, he'll go through with you what qualifies you, et cetera. But anyone out there who wants to do their civic duty now, it's a great time to step up.
I think this is another good point, is we only need, we, we need locations for people to go vote, polling places. And sometimes they're going to be more difficult to find because of access, okay? Because of the coronavirus. Okay? But what makes sense to us? We, we should be opening up the schools to vote. Shut the schools down twice a year.
That's what I'm going to do.
So there's no handicap issues, there's no parking issues, there's plenty of safety. This is where we should be holding our, our, our process in, in our schools. And that should be something that our legislators should look at, and maybe, maybe we can do it in the very near future.
That's a great point. Hey, we, we could talk for another hour, but Hey, we, we could talk for another hour, but one, one thing I want to point out, we didn't get to the airport, to our friend Olive, Olive's 94 years old, talked to both of us.
Yes, she did.
And, and we're going to come back and talk.
I would love to have a Ruth Chris come here. I would love to have a Chick-fil-A come here, but.
My, my little April Fools there, she, but more importantly, I promised her I would talk to you guys about getting more flights in and out of the airport, but we're not going to talk about it today. We're going to come back and talk. I don't think today's the time, but 94 years old and she wants to know how she can get in and out of a sport as many times as possible. So it's a great problem to have, and she's one of the people we need to protect.
Absolutely.
And not get parting shots, we'll start with you, my Italian friend.
I, I believe faith conquers fear. And there was a good documentary on, yesterday I saw it on Netflix, Bill Gates and, and COVID. Just watch it. It gives you the basics of what's going on. You, you could say some of it could be propaganda, maybe not, but watch it, you learn a little bit. And it put me a little bit more at ease. And Jim, I want to thank you for the opportunity you gave us here. I hope it answered some questions, and, and I look forward to doing another one in the future.
Absolutely, and thank you for welcoming us in. Mr. Marabito, your turn, parting shot.
Oh, I would just say thank you also to, to you, Jim, the Web Weekly, and to our listeners. And also to just follow the science, listen to what the scientists are telling you, that the scientists are trying to protect us. And also look at the, the math nature behind this and, and do, we all do what we're asked to do if we, we put the greater good ahead of our individual good. It doesn't mean we can't do something to also benefit our, 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 you know, individuals by dealing smart and following, you know, obviously the, the guidelines that are put out. We're going to be fine with this. And honestly, I think that we're going to learn some lessons that are going to help us in the future. We're certainly as a nation going to learn that we can't have all of our manufacturing dependent on foreign countries, that we have to have the manufacturer of, of a personal protective equipment in the state. We need to deal with, with our medical vaccines, have that capacity here, and so that our drugs are not all being produced overseas. So we're going to learn some good lessons that way. And, and our hearts go out to all the families that have suffered, who have had people who passed away, even though they may not be in our community, they are Americans. And all you have to do is, is look at some of the stories of the people who have passed away. And they're not all older. The 25-year-old social worker who, you know, dreamed about helping her community and who got the virus, the, the other families, old and young. And, you know, just say that we have to be aware of how we can help each other out. Thank you, Jim.
Hey, great message. And Mr. Chairman?
Well, my condolences and prayers go out to the victims, the ones that have passed. Obviously, it's, it's tough to lose any, any member of your family. So first of all, our prayers and condolences go out to them. What I've seen is, is through this virus, we've seen a lot of things exposed, our weaknesses, even on a county level. I've seen things that we can, we can do differently going forward with new policies and procedures. So that if we do have anything in the future that's long-term, well, we'll be ready to go and, and attack it in a different way. So it helps you, through your weaknesses and through your failures, you gain strengths. And so hopefully through that process, we can also do that. I, I also believe that going forward, we need to begin to have a safer, a safer approach in a sense, instead of staying at home, a safer home approach. Our Americans are, are smart people. The people like Coming County did what they needed to do. They, they took this serious, I think that's why our numbers are low. Sure, we have a smaller population than the metro areas, but our, our folks took this serious and they did what they needed to do. Now it's time to go and get, get back to living and do it in a safe, cautious way, but a smart way.
I'll give you another amen, is that all right?
Thank you.
Very well said. And hey, my message is simple. Be safe, be happy, take care of each other out there, and God bless America.